All right, so we did have a call. We have twenty present, three absent. Look over your agenda for the saving, please. Let me know if you have anything you want to change outwardly.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We would like to defer item fee one. For the final amendment. We have packages, so we're not going to defer it until next month. Please make your move.
Okay, so commissioners, that's second sheet of paper out of fee one. The third also says it's not a timely matter. Any files?
Alex Hope does a minute.
And thank you for that. We have a motion from Mary Fraser, second, of Mary Keena. There is discussion. All right, please vote on our approval of the agenda without one out in the room. Motion passes. Item five is our prayer. It's going to be led by the senior by Commissioner Hoxton. Followed by the pledge, Commissioner Dyson Fawcett. Please say.
Just having, Father, we thank you, Lord, for your grace and mercies that you bestowed upon us. Father, we just pray that you would be here in our midst tonight and that, Lord, that your will would be done. Father, we give you thanks for each and every person that's here. And God, we just pray for your will will be done and every decision made, every vote taken. And, Father, we give you the glory for all things in the name of Jesus. Amen. Amen.
Okay, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are elected and appointed officials, please stand.
Hello, thank you.
Look over the amendments from May nine T first. We'll take them one at a time, so may not be. Floor is open. If anybody gets ready to make a motion. Motion is made by Hoxton, seconded by Mary Fraser. Does anyone see anything that needs to be changed in any way? All right, let's load on the minutes for May nine T. Motion passes. Look over Gina Field. Motion is made by Frank Johnson, seconded by Avery Nguyen. Are any changes needed for Gina Field? Eighteen none, let's start on the Gina Field minutes. Okay, so due to access, we do have some extensions and so on, so it still passes with sixteen. Thank you. The clerk's office will now read our notice of bonds for the month.
Amanda Sapp, Andrea X Bailey, Ryan Mute Peppers, and Renell Hyder, Holloman. Juan, Marianna Ekar, Mickey Garland, Cheryl Phillips, Christine Tanner Dyer, and Douglas Pratt.
We just approve those for notice of bonds. Motion by Nancy Brown, seconded by Avery Nguyen. Let's load on the notice of bonds for the month that's changed. Motion passes. Item number ten is our quarter tourism report. And we have Robert Chamber, Luke Freeman, our tourism director. If you want to bring anybody with you, Luke, go along with that.
You can go wherever you want, or I'm happy to.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Luke Freeman, director of tourism over at the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to share our quarterly report with you. That's what I've been doing since the last report back in March. Just a few weeks ago, April twenty-sixth, we sponsored the Music and Miles Half Marathon. I used an alternate route this year due to not being able to close Elk Avenue through downtown. Started and finished Elizabethton High School instead, and the runners ran mostly on the Tweedsey Trail. This race had over three hundred participants from around our region, as well as having runners from Kentucky, North Carolina, Alabama, and so running a decent bit of tourism and just folks from around our area who might not otherwise. I know in my March report, I mentioned that we were sponsoring the Carter County Omnium again this year, and that they were also having to use an alternate location for the Criterion on Sunday up at T-CAD. That happened on May thirty-first and June first that weekend. They brought a great crowd of one hundred and twenty-seven different racers, eighteen of whom were from the Tri-Cities area and other one hundred and nine who were an hour away. The race director does a survey every year of those participants, but he hasn't got the results back for this year. Based on the number of people who attended and the average statistics from his surveys over the past five years, he estimated we probably had about seventy-five room nights in Carter County for that event, and that we'll see annual returns as people coming back as tourists of over three hundred visitors and over two hundred room nights in Carter County. Many of those people used to come back again for vacation because they come and realize how great it is this year. We purchased a sponsored online article with North Carolina's Our State Magazine. The title of that is Five Can't Miss Outdoor Activities in Carter County, which featured information on fishing, hiking, birding, boating, and some of our local history. That article is posted on their website for one year, and they promote it on their social media channel. What was in their email later. Similar purchased article with Style Blueprint, which is an online publication based out of Nashville. It's called Six Stops for a Perfect Tennessee Summer. That was actually a co-op we did to state tour tomorrow. So we were one of the six they included in that. And that was something the state tourism office subsidized the cost of, so we were paying there full. We provided sponsorships for things like Liberty, I got Sycamore Shoals, which is, of course, happening this month, River Riders Baseball, which is starting this month, and Downtown Elizabethan's First Friday. We've done advertising in Blue Ridge Outdoors, Our State, Smoky Mountain Living, and the Angler magazines, and as well as we had a feature in the Blue Ridge Parkway's annual travel planner to try and bring folks over. Some of the people go to Blue Ridge Parkway every year from all over. So trying to bring some of those people a little time to get off the Parkway and come visit us. Over the past three months, our search engine marketing campaign has generated approximately thirty-five thousand impressions and three thousand click star websites. That puts Carter County on the radar of folks who are doing Google searches for stuff like campgrounds in Tennessee, mountains, or mountain cabin rentals. Obviously, to show up in those results and pan in to get at the top of that stuff is something very helpful and something that puts us in front of a lot of people. Paid social media ads had over two hundred and eight thousand impressions, and our YouTube ad had over one hundred and twenty-two thousand impressions. About half of those people watching our one-minute video all the way through. We continue to work with print distribution to distribute our brochure to over three hundred racks in the Tri-Cities, Knoxville, and Western North Carolina area, as well as the five closest Tennessee welcome centers. And I just want to remind you all that we're now about nine months until the end of our current one-year contract, which no longer renews automatically. The Chamber of Commerce certainly hopes that you'll see the value in our tourism for this county and we can continue our long-running relationship. Some of those things I mentioned, like our brochure distribution and some of the advertising we do on annual contracts, so as well as stuff like event sponsorships, grants, and things that are planned well out in advance. So, you know, it's very helpful to us to have an idea of if we're going to have funding. So that's something I would like to encourage you, and already started on that process, to start looking at how you want to spend hotel motel tax collections after next March. So if, at all possible, we don't have to interrupt the work that we're doing. Carter County has a great place to visit and keep bringing over fifty million dollars a year and growing in direct economic impact from tourism. Thank you for your time. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to try and.
Would it be able to be possible to get this information divided?
Yeah, I can send that in.
Thank you so much. It sounds like y'all have been really busy and really bringing in some tourism for us. Thank you.
Luke Freeman, I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have been doing and are going to do. Now, the question I've got with all the tourism we're having here and campers and so on, what about, has anyone looked into the fact that we have maybe part of a hotel or motel here that people could use? Or have, has anyone, that's not probably in your field of work, but how would we go about getting someone to build a nice motel or hotel? That's one big thing that tourism, where they want to stay.
Yeah, that's a great question. And that's something that has kind of been in the works. I know a lot of different groups, including the county, I believe, have been part of. There was a hotel feasibility study that was being worked on recently. I know we were part of that. We did interviews with the company who was doing that to kind of encourage them, to kind of show them the need for that here. I'll be honest, I'm not exactly sure what the status of that is right now, but I know that is something that was in the works. Thank you for your time. As always, if there's any questions you think of later or needing information, please feel free to contact us at the chamber. We're always happy to respond.
Thank you, Luke.
I believe the director will worry about you.
Hoxton is next.
Good evening. All of your reports or any packet, as usual, if you have any questions or comments, please let me know. We are trying to finish up the budget process, almost all the other things that we're doing, and that's going fairly well, so we hope to have that finished up in the next few days.
Number four, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything about the hotel since you were in on that?
Yeah, I can update you on the hotel. The feasibility study was completed, and we have selected a contractor for a piece of property, which is the piece of property in between the car wash in Elizabethan and the, I'll get it, the stowaway. So you'll see that piece of property. Right now, that's the city's property, and that, so we are currently developing or actually updating the legal language in the TIF agreement. So there has been a developer selected for an extended stay. As soon as we can get the TIF language updated with the city and their legal department, we will be moving forward with that hotel development there.
Thank you for that update. All right, communication.
Good evening. I've got a big update coming next month. Motorola's still working on the paperwork. We don't have that just yet. They've got to finalize that and be with me next month. We've got a big update on where we're at and where we're at. I was working with the sheriff on a few things, some radios, trying to help them make some better decisions. Not that they're not making bad decisions, that's not it. It's just, it helps them see that there's other equipment that would work better for them. And all the EMA on one of their vehicles, trying to make sure that everything's back in there, the lights and the sirens and all that good stuff. And following up with the road project up to White Rock, that part of the project is ongoing. We're supposed to go up there tomorrow, but with all the rain that's coming in this week and today, we didn't feel like that was a good idea to try to be up on that mountain in all this rain. So we had to postpone that till next week. So next month, I'll give you an update of White Rock, where we're at and what the engineers were telling me up there. And that's about all I've got for the project right now.
Any other question? We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
All right, item number fourteen, Director Emmerich. Did I say that?
Oh, you got much better.
Good evening, Eva. So on our disaster upgrade, update for category A, we've started submitting all the documentation for the debris temporary degrading sites. I've gone out to bid, or will be opening up tomorrow. Category B, all the pre-applications are in the process of being submitted. Temporary protection has been obligated, and the contract's aligned with FEMA. So we are anticipating funding between thirty to sixty days. We have submitted to FEMA to start drawing on the funds that have been obligated. On our category C projects, the roads, the sixteen highway projects are still at the CRC for cost analysis. The site inspections have been done. The work in the next thirty days, we should have contractors in place to start the work in Shell Creek and Hampton areas. Project NRCS, project thirty-seven, we can't fix the roads until the banks are actually secure. So contractors are starting next, next two weeks on the bank stabilization on the projects one and three, which is Shell and Heaton Creek, and the two RFPs going out for the other two projects for two and four, which is Hampton and Shutter Creek. All the projects have been submitted to FEMA. We have still not received obligations. It's in review. POGI one and two are still in the engineering phase, hopefully to be completed in August. After that phase, they, we're looking at about one to two years to rebuild those bridges. Long Hollow is in fact for the completion of the engineering phase. When that's done, it'll take about six months to complete Long Hollow. Category E, we're still doing site inspections, and will be submitted to review for the CRC cost analysis. Category K, the parks, Anderson Park, we are working on the, still working on the grid application. It's a one-point-five-million-dollar local park and rec brand, fifty-fifty through Appalachian coalition. There's no cost to the county, but we still need to submit the applications and hopefully we'll have an answer. The site inspection is scheduled for that park. And the category Z, we're still collecting all the administrative costs. We're working with FEMA to see how many of those projects we're going to have because we are still working on all the debris, so.
Bank stabilization, are they going to do the Doe River along with those other creeks?
I believe.
There's a rumor that they're not going to be digging the river out.
Doing what?
They may not be digging the river out, rocks out of the river.
They did.
Six feet, five miles, now about eighteen inches.
Okay.
If I get two inches of rain, I got water running through my backyard.
Okay, and you said this on the Doe? If you would let me know where exactly that is, I will follow up with them to see if NRCS is actually doing that. I don't, I've not heard that mentioned, but that doesn't mean. Okay, yeah, Cove Creek actually is part of the Shell Creek project, so then I would, I'll double check tomorrow.
The Doe twenty-shit with Cove Creek and Harm Barn.
Okay.
Outside the park. That was six feet deep back there before the storm, and now Harm Barn over the Doe Creek is a couple of feet deep, most places.
Okay, I will definitely look into that if I don't get back to you with it. And tomorrow, I will definitely have that update.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
All right, time for a couple of comments. If anybody could just state to the commission this evening, please come forward. Okay, standing up, Luke. We will move to item sixteen, which begins our committee report. Let the committee set first. Dr. Bob, the head chair.
Just to remind the budget committee and all commissioners that we will meet, call budget meeting this Thursday at sixteen. So all of you are welcome to come, but I hope all of our budget committee members will be there. We're practically finished. I think we've got a fairly large pack for Thursday night to approve. All budget members receive that packet tonight, so be prepared to vote on those departments when we convene the meeting on Thursday. Following that, Finance Department will place all of the items in the correct form, and you as commissioners will get a packet including all the budgets, what the penny is worth, how a piece of the pie is divided up throughout, throughout the county in terms of supporting each of our financial obligations, whether it be debt service or one-one-oh-lawn or whatever. So you'll have a copy of that, and we'll reconvene on June thirtieth as a commission, workshop occurring, the first part of the meeting, followed by voting. We'll get your packet for then, so that you'll be prepared to have any questions answered and attend the workshop and then vote on the budget. We'll have that back to Nashville, probably the first part of July, which would be real sweet. So just remember that for this Thursday, there is a budget meeting. Just to remind what the EMA director said, we have two RFPs that are in progress for restoration of temporary debris sites. One of those will be covered by FEMA. The other one will not be covered by FEMA and require county funds. Look like RFPs are open tomorrow.
Ten and ten-thirty.
Ten and three-thirty.
Ten-thirty.
Two-thirty, okay. So we'll have that information for you at the next meeting. I'm going to go ahead with item number two. I want to make this motion there on my hat, this is Abby Frye. Talk about these two items that come, the items that are coming from the sheriff's office. So we're on ten sixteen-two. And I'll make the motion to approve a proposal from the sheriff's department, modify the agreement for the current fiscal year to allocate two-hundred thousand dollars for restricted funds for the purpose of serving, servicing the note for jail construction, H-BAC upgrade to provide additional, two-hundred thousand dollars in the excess board bill reserve to purchase the equipment needed for additional officers hired. Have any more comment, please make?
Can everybody hear me? All right. In nineteen ninety-five, the county commissions a litigation tax on the cases that move through the general sessions and chance record, and the purpose behind this was to create a fund that would help pay for destruction or renovation or upgrades to the current jail or workhouse facilities, with the idea being that those who use the criminal justice system could help to fund it. They updated it over the years as the laws have changed and changed the amount that's available. Currently, there is four-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty dollars in this reserve fund. We are asking for you to allocate two-hundred thousand of that that will be used to pay on the notes for the jail and the H-BAC that will reduce the burden on excess inmate board bills from one million dollars to eight-hundred thousand for those notes, and that will free up two-hundred thousand dollars for us to use to purchase equipment and training and things we need for the officers in the agency without putting the burden on the taxpayers.
Questions? And we're ready to vote now, Jim.
Okay, as y'all see, Leslie Hughes did second that on your screen, and we are ready to vote.
Thank you all.
Okay, the next item sixteen-three, I'll make the motion to approve the proposal from the sheriff's department to use restricted Title III funds designated for training costs and equipment for emergency services to purchase dual-band radios for the sheriff's department vehicles and for the Volunteer Fire Association.
And a drone for the sheriff's.
And a drone, okay. Just left off, thank you.
Currently, there are two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand, eighty-six dollars in the Title III funds. These funds come to Carter County from the federal government. Whenever they allow a commercial logging or other commercial activity to take place on national forest lands or federal lands, they collect a fee, and then a portion of that fee gets remitted to the county where the activity occurred. These funds are restricted by the federal government for use for emergency response, and the other program it uses is for firewise communities, which Carter County is not part of the firewise community program. It's more for those communities near federal lands that have wildfires and frequent burnings. But we are requesting that thirty thousand dollars from this be expended for a drone for the sheriff's department. We currently have one that was purchased several years ago. However, the technology is very outdated, and it no longer meets the requirements set by state and federal regulations and laws on it. We are grandfathered in to keep using it, but we really need to get an upgraded one. This was something we used a lot during the flood recovery to do searches, rescues, to do damage evaluations. That would leave two-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars of the Title III funds. We are requesting a hundred-and-five-thousand go towards the sheriff's department for these dual-band radios. These will be UCF, plus they will work on the new P-TAC system. So we can use these now and later. This will help us equip some of the officers with radios that we need now, but they will still be usable whenever the communications project is finished. We would request that the remaining one-hundred thousand dollars be designated for the Volunteer Firefighters Association to help them with purchasing the radios for their departments. Because as you know, through the communications project, that's been one of the concerns of the firefighters, is that there's not going to be enough radios covered in that project for all the people to have one. So we would request that you all allow us to expend these funds. If they are not obligated and expended by September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six, they go back to the federal government, and let's use them while we've got them.
Questions?
Okay, and if you see, Chris Hoxton seconded that motion. And I shall have promised, we're taking the vote.
Thank you all. Those two examples shed again, not only show the leadership we have in the sheriff's department, but the team that works together day in and day out over there. Just want to thank you, Sheriff Frayley, and your team for yet again stepping up and helping out our county in numbers of our areas. This isn't the first time that y'all have done that, and I want to make sure you're recognized every time that you bring your identity to the table. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll move to sixteen-four. I'll make the motion to approve slaking construction flood related EPO for the highway department in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars to purchase stone for county road repairs. Look in your packet from the budget meeting, see each of the items and EPOS and the information that is written down here on the sheet. Y'all should have a copy of that. Any questions? And then we're.
All right, we have thirty seconds, and here we go. Let's go. Let's vote.
We'll move on to sixteen, number five, and I'll make the motion to approve Mayne Materials Flood Related P.O. for the Highway Department in the amount of $20,000 to purchase stone for county road repairs.
Seconded by Aaron Fraser. Questions? Let's vote.
Thank you. We'll move on to sixteen six, and I'll make the motion to approve County Fund Budget Amendment one zero one dash one one, items one through eighteen, in the amount of $321,143.96, with $2,400 coming from reserve accounts, nothing coming from the most account balance.
Question taken by Aaron Fraser.
Questions?
Okay, we're ready.
That passes, thank you. Move on to item number seven under sixteen. I'll make the motion to approve Solid Waste Fund Budget Amendment one one six dash seven, items one and two, in the amount of $155,651.89, with nothing coming from reserve funds, and $155,651.89 coming from Fund 116's fund balance.
Seconded by Angie Chan. Any questions here? Let's vote.
Thank you unanimously. Move on to item number eight under sixteen, and I'll make the motion to approve Highway Fund Budget Amendment one three one dash eight, items one and two, in the amount of $66,975.20, with nothing coming from reserve accounts and nothing coming from Fund 116's fund balance.
Seconded by Nancy Brown. I just placed it. Thank you, let's vote.
Thank you unanimously. Move on to item number nine, and I'll make the motion to approve the General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendment one four one dash eight, items one through fourteen, in the amount of $4867,133.22, nothing coming from reserve accounts, and $4147.9600 coming from Fund 101, one four one's fund balance.
Motion has been seconded by Angie Chan. Any questions? Okay, let's vote.
Okay, that passes. We move on to item number ten under sixteen, and I'll make the motion to accept school federal funds, project funds, Budget Amendment one four two dash nine, items one through six, in the amount of $24,364.30, with nothing coming from reserve accounts and nothing coming from one four two's fund balance.
Motion has been seconded by Angie Odo. Any comments or questions? Let's vote.
Thank you unanimously. Move on to item number eleven under sixteen, and I'll make the motion to approve Head Start Fund Budget Amendment one four five dash six, item number one, in the amount of $23,245.58, nothing from reserve accounts, and nothing coming from Fund 145's fund balance.
Seconded by Commissioner Nancy Brown. Any questions? Let's vote.
Move on to item number twelve under sixteen. I'll make the motion to approve the animal shelter monetary donations in the amount of $5,865.00.
Seconded by Aaron Fraser. Let's vote.
Thank you unanimously. Last item from the Budget Committee, and I'll make the motion to approve the animal shelter non-monetary donations in the amount of $175.00.
Motion seconded by Nancy Brown. Let's vote.
One correction, I'm told, item number six, uh, item number six, the motion should read to approve County Fund Budget Amendment 101 dash one one, items one through eighteen, in the amount of $221,413.96, with nothing coming out of the phone. Sorry about that.
Year four of 113.
To be four thirteen instead of forty. National National Defense now, Chairman Brad Johnson.
A little reference here in the sheet, we had referred the one, which threatens me and discovered that all of our package was lost, dealing with the information. It will come up next month, and the reason being is that items outside Financial Management Committee relating to our recent change of medical provider for our employees, which the items that will come before you will be going in the employee's handbook. So the next item is item number two, and I present the motion to approve the TACAN Participation Grant Contract needed for the purpose. I propose new radio system, this goes with the Motorola system. This is the Tennessee Advanced Communication Network contract. It has been reviewed, it's by our legal.
Seconded by Leslie Hughes. Does anyone have a question? Let's vote.
Go ahead unanimously. Thank you. We're going to item number three, motion to approve the disposal of surface property for the Communications Department, eighty-five seven twenty-five, be sold on debt deals. That would be a thousand and nine shillay. Tahoe. You didn't even say it. There is a surprise button.
All right, seconded by Angie Chan. Let's vote, if there are no questions.
Motion passes. Next item number four, approve, a motion to approve the transfer of surplus property from the Circuit Court to the Carter County Sheriff's Department, dated four twenty-four of twenty-five. This is the infamous green van, that used to be used to transport jurors on duty, high stakes life-like.
That motion has been seconded by Nancy Brown. Any comments or questions here? Let's vote.
Motion passed, thank you. Next item is number five, motion to approve the disposal of surplus property for General Sessions Court offices, dated five thirty of twenty-five, to be scrapped due to conditions of items. And on your packet list, these are office chairs, which are in cool shape, can be replaced, and they're to be trashed. Next item would be item number six. So you had to get a motion, you had to vote on that, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Seconded by Dr. Erika. Any comments? Let's vote. Sessions Court.
Motion passed, thank you. Item number six, motion to approve the disposal of surplus property for the Carter County Sheriff's Office, dated six four of twenty-five, be sold on debt deals. The list of the property surplus, there is three different units. Well, that would be four, every one is the old green van, which they took possession of the night, and everyone is bad motors, bad transmissions, and one involved an accident, and all of them are very good.
That motion is seconded by Lisa Clarkson. Reserve and dispositions. Let's vote.
Thank you much, President. I yield my vote.
Thank you, Sheriff Johnson. All right, the last person getting it. Sheriff Jason, who's boss.
All right, so a resolution here for the Sheriff's Department, seems like it's been really thankful for this department that is honored like this and deserves the honor. We appreciate your leadership. Attorney Arden, if you wouldn't mind, to read the resolution.
Sure. This is a resolution recognizing the historic achievement of the Carter County Detention Center being awarded Tier One accreditation from the Tennessee Corrections Institute. Whereas the Carter County Detention Center was awarded a Tier One accreditation from the Tennessee Corrections Institute on June four, 2025, whereas the TCI currently recognizes two tiers of accreditation that level of detention facilities can earn that are above and beyond the required standards of the annual jail inspection and certification. Whereas to achieve a Tier One accreditation, the Detention Center not only has to pass its normal certification requirements, but also have to meet at least seventeen of the twenty optional standards, the accreditation standards focus on operational matters such as employee training, agency policies, availability of programs to reduce inmate recidivism, available medical services for inmates, and the jail's physical facility. Whereas this milestone achievement has been awarded for the first time in the department's history, and comes less than three years after TCI recommended decertifying the Detention Center in September of 2022. Whereas this amazing improvement at the Detention Center would not have been possible without the hard work and dedication of Sheriff Mike Fraley, jail administrator Captain Matthew Peterson, and all the dedicated employees and staff who worked tirelessly to maintain the operational standards at the Detention Center. Whereas it's appropriate for the Board of County Commissioners to specifically recognize this impressive accomplishment, and therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners for Carter County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session on this sixteenth day of June 2025, with the lawful courtroom set board being present, majority voting in affirmative that the Board hereby adopts this resolution officially recognizing the outstanding work and dedication of Sheriff Mike Fraley, jail administrator Captain Matthew Peterson, and all of the dedicated employees and staff working in the Detention Center on the historic accomplishment of being awarded Tier One accreditation from the Tennessee Corrections Institute.
Okay, we have a second from Aaron Fraser, and Aaron, if you could just say...
Yes, ma'am. I want to congratulate Sheriff Fraley and all the guys. If you would have told me this was going to happen three years ago, I would have laughed out loud. You've done an amazing job today. I didn't think that you weren't capable of doing it. I just thought it could not be turned around that fast, and we are definitely in your debt. Now, to be the El Parti pooper, there's a couple of typos in the resolution, as well as in the agenda pertaining to this one, so we'll get those corrected later. I never knew how to jam.
Without you guys, we wouldn't be doing this. I mean that. You guys took a chance on us three years ago. I want to say thank you for taking a chance on us. These guys sitting over here, they did all the heavy lifting. Many thanks to you all for making this happen. Thank you.
Not to be nitpicky, just to give credit where credit's due, it's Kevin Powers.
Livers.
Okay. Anything else? All right, let's start on this resolution. Okay, access others. Thank you all very, very much. Time for the county committee report.
So, as always, I'll give you just the general update of litigation. There were no new complaints filed this month, which is a good thing. I am still pursuing the legal regulation cases each month until you're court. We're going to have proper inspection this month, we'll go back to court on that next month. There was one new complaint that's in works to be filed. Specifics as to any others, I'm happy to discuss with y'all at any time. Otherwise, the work up and down throughout the month is summarized, as it always is in the writ report, which will be in the minutes. Unless anybody has a question about that, tonight I'm going to try to quickly go through some of the new public acts that are taking effect. Some have already taken effect, some are scheduled to take effect July first. Try to, each year, when these summaries come out, pick out the ones that are most relevant for these bodies to hear, to give a little deeper explanation. We'd have to be here all night to get into the weeds and all of them, but I want to get the high notes with it. And of course, if anybody has any specific questions along the way or later, happy to discuss or send out the information I have to everybody. So before I go into that, was there any questions about the other stuff? So first, went into effect April thir- So first, went into effect April 3rd, is the ability now the county commission has to remove members of appointed boards or commissions. This is not members of the county commission, but members of other outside appointed boards or commissions. If the appointing authority recommends it, and you have to give a certain notice, five days, five business days' notice of the meeting when you're going to remove them, it will give the county commission, authority they've never had before, to remove certain persons from appointed boards or commissions. That is Public Chapter 132, effective now. An interesting one, Public Chapter 514, which authorizes the attorney general's office to investigate unconstitutional acts by the governing body. So this is something that's never been in effect in Tennessee before. Essentially, if it's alleged, and we receive notice from the AG's office that there's been some action taken in violation of the constitution or state law, and the AG's opinion, we've got sixty days to fix it, or request a hearing in front of a three-judge panel to determine who's right and who's wrong, if we disagree. And if you don't fix it, after they've determined that they're right and you're wrong, they will hold off state funding. That's unique, never been in Tennessee before, and it is effective as of July 1. So it's very simple.
I thought they was going to put the chair in jail if we didn't figure it out.
That might be next.
Pay all the fines she serves all the time, actually.
That's it.
What was the first public acts chapter number?
132. No, it's 514. Yeah, I'll give you any of these you want. There's a couple of different summary documents, but one put out by the Tennessee County Services Association, another one going out by C Task. They're like seventy, eighty pages long, so I didn't want to send all that, but any one of these that y'all want. All right, the next one is, I'll touch on it a little bit, it's Chapter 413, Open Chapter 413. It started out as a bill that would have required cities to pay their portion of ambulance services that the county contracts with, but that didn't pass. And it was amended down to, they're going to conduct a study and let us know later what they find. So that's the update for now, no change in the law, as was originally proposed, except for they're going to study. Interestingly, Open Chapter 123 is already effective, and the county can delegate to the road sur prescient, the right to adjust speed limits, as long as the department employs an engineer capable of completing the required engineering and traffic investigations. So I don't know if we have that or not, but if we do.
We live.
Keep sitting then. Maybe we don't count anyone. We've already talked about it, I think it's been mentioned in another place, due to the accreditation accomplishment in the sheriff's office inmate court bill increased for state inmates, so that takes effect July 1. I think that's already being figured into the budget. That was Public Chapter 531. Public Chapter 320, over the last couple of years, there's been an ongoing saga with work release and monitoring, GPS. The new law, as amended this year, says if the prisoner is being released for paid employment, the cost of their device is deducted from their wages. The county still must pay the costs for unpaid work. That's a change. Also, on the topic of GPS, Public Chapter 253 goes into a lot heavier regulation of GPS monitoring companies. When that law first happened last year, it was kind of like Wild West, the folks pitching GPS monitoring services. This law fleshes out a lot of requirements and qualifications for those companies, they have to register through the state, but we still have to have a contract with one of those services for GPS monitoring when it's ordered by the board. I think we're still under contract. All right, so square on point are the next couple in regard to open meetings. Public Chapter 411 now sets out a procedure by which this commission can adopt a policy by two-thirds vote to allow electronic participation in meetings by commissioners. It's very limited. You can only participate in that fashion when it's a family or medical emergency as determined by the legislative body, a commissioner has been called into military service, or is unable to attend in person due to inclement weather. You can only participate in this fashion when the chair can visually identify you, which essentially means Zoom or some other such a program that allows in-person video. And you can only do this, only up to three members at a time can be absent or participate in that way. And one commissioner can only participate in that way twice per year. If you opt into this and develop a procedure, which we can do, it has to be streamlined, streamed live, it has to be available audio/video to the public, and everybody to see it, and there has to be an audio or video recording of the meeting made available within two business days after the meeting. So there's a lot of conditions to this. It could probably be something that would come through rules and bylaws to consider if you were to have some sort of policy. But in these limited circumstances, if all the equipment works, we could have up to three on physically present commissioners. The next one is Public Chapter 360, which deals with agendas. So last year, the law was updated to say that we had to make agendas available to the public, place available to the public at least forty-eight hours, but we may put that agenda on the county website. This year, that law was changed to shall. So we are required to put a meeting agenda on the county website, forty-eight hours at least before the meeting. Now, it did flesh it out a little bit more to say, it was kind of generic into which meetings that applied to. It definitely applies to the county commission meetings. Now they've fleshed out, it applies to planning commission meetings, border song appeals, industrial development board, county election commission, and the budget committee of a legislative body. So definitely applies for our purposes here to the full commission and the budget committee. Wouldn't be a bad practice, because it's probably going to change in the future, just to put them all on there within forty-eight hours, before forty-eight hours before the meeting. Definitely have to do it before the main commission and the budget right now. As part of that, I'll just mention, agendas are supposed to be specific as to the items that are going to be addressed. We certainly have a procedure to amend the agenda in certain situations, but I'll just say, agendas that say, oh, business, new business, aren't good enough. I mean, we need to list out voting items on the agendas specifically. And obviously, if things come up that aren't known in advance, and you're not trying to circumvent the law by just not giving notice, we can amend agendas at the beginning of the meeting to add something, but generic isn't good enough, in my opinion, under this law, so we need to start specifying on all agendas, specific items. Any questions on that? These others aren't as on point, but there's a new law created, Public Chapter 98, regarding cooperative purchasing, and I'm sure this was Carolyn, that allows some more expanded cooperative purchasing between governments that we could possibly utilize. Hotel motel taxes, it used to be that if someone stayed more than thirty days in the hotel motel defined facility, that they were exempt totally. Now, they're still charged hotel motel tax for the first thirty days regardless of how long they stay. So that's a change in the law that we'll have to address with clerk's office, it's a little bit different. Mineral severance tax, we already did a resolution on that last month, so we were kind of a little bit ahead of the game on that. The only other one I was going to somewhat address was the Public Chapter 372, which goes into more definitions on tourism, tourism development for purposes of hotel motel tax. We're still under the private act, so it's not square on point with us, but it makes clear that under the law, we have to use those things for tourism, and there's no other allowed use of the funds. So just to say that, I'll say that law's been amended. But other than that, there's hundreds of new laws that they pass every year. These are just the highlighted ones that I thought were most relevant to people. Like I said, I'm happy to send out whatever anybody wants on those, so you're aware of them. I just wanted to make sure that you at least had heard somebody say them before they think of that. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise, that's all I have.
Okay, so before we move to anything else, I just want to talk about justice for a second. So if you're a chairman of a committee, people need to get your agenda to the clerk's office seventy-two hours in advance? Okay. Mr. Fraser, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was gonna, just none of the regular meeting minutes have been updated onto the website since, I think the last one was in here was 2024, and prior to that, it was 2022 and 2021. So we're way behind. That's not just for monthly minutes or committee, that's full commission and committees. And it would not be a problem, I don't think, for most of the chairs to upload our own agendas to the website, we would just need access to do so. He's right behind you. So I think it would, I don't think it's that big of a deal for us to upload those or anything. The agenda, at least, the agenda part of it, but the minutes part of it, we don't get until we swing back around to the full commission meeting, so.
I'll just say, the new law doesn't pertain to minutes, although I'm not saying that's not a good idea to put the minutes up, but as far as the requirement goes, it's just the agenda, not the associated materials, just the agenda. That's what the law requires, and certainly, I'm not saying it's a bad idea to put everything on there, if we can do that.
Is it possible, Anthony, or even do we have to train everybody to do it? Train everybody?
What would it take to get the minutes up? Online, so people could read them?
What does the law say about who can or should or whoever be putting the agendas on the website?
Well, it doesn't really specify, I mean, it just says it's a requirement if a county maintains a website, so I guess you could do away with the website if you didn't want to do it. Since we have the website, you know, it would seem to me that, you know, the procedure would be to get everything turned in through the clerk's office, but I understand the technology issues and not having access, but as far as the agendas go, I mean, I don't think it's that technologically involved, just to post a PDF document on there if we just have the training on it. Now, the minutes aren't required to be published in that manner, and the county clerk is keeping the minutes as are required in the books in her office. That's what's required.
Some of the new systems that you want to look at for the audio/video system, City of Morristown, they went with the company that video records and does everything, it's all in one package, and in that package, it's included that they put the agenda online before they get meetings. So if you went with a system like that, that's part of their procedures, is getting all that information online. So obviously, if you look at a new system, that would be one of the criterias that you would want to look at, that they include in their quotes.
In response to the Morristown company that's doing that, is that a contract that they're paid to do that by?
Yeah, they came, the company came in, put it all together.
They contracted the equipment bar, they contracted.
Contracted, yeah, it's all local.
Any idea what that might cost?
No, I wouldn't even want to start to speculate on that. I can find out, but we would definitely want to use that company. If we get, if you guys want to get bids on new systems, we would want to include that company as part of your bidding, you know.
What's he called after?
I don't know the name of it. I can get more information. You can go to City of Morristown, so I think buymorristown.com, they have the same website company revised that we use, and they went with this company to do their meetings.
So I still feel a little bit confused, because I've seen a few chairmen of committees shaking their heads up during this conversation. I would like to suggest that, with Attorney Harden's agreement in this, that the Rules and Bylaws Committee look into whose responsibility it is for the Carter County Commission to have a witness online and how we're going to think so, to meet the requirements of the law. And Attorney Harden, you did say this against July 1.
It's effective now.
Effective now?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's for the main committees, the commission and the.
Right, the law specifies about full commission, planning commission, budget committee, like I said, not the individual standing committees, but, you know, I think you.
I understand.
Everything's moving in that direction, so, you know, it'd be too much information, so I would suggest that all, I mean, if you're going to get in the habit of doing it, I think all of us should.
Can you send us that information, that law, so we know what it says?
Until we get trained, I will put any information that needs to be put up, I'll put it up until we get everybody trained and able to do it. So if you just send me the information, I'll make sure it gets on the website.
Okay.
Till we get it trained.
I agree with you.
I don't know about everybody else, but there are some areas in this county that are still doing, and I have good enough internet to do that. I have commissioned, or the committee chairman. In going satellite, I still get some Buffy, but I couldn't do anything for it to me. Everybody's got a spectrum, I'm here the same thing, I put my son's perspective up on Dr. Road, got to do some work online up there, and couldn't get him up. So there's too many places in this county for the committee chairman to try to post this online. Place we just don't have.
I hate to put a burden on your committee, but I feel like that's the right places where you go.
They're going to put our next.
Just flesh that out and let us know, and then depending upon what you decide, we can have a group training, or we can have individual training. Right now, I know we have so many extra meetings, but there's extra meetings in the budget, so we try not to have any extra meetings. So we try not to add any extra meetings, but if that's what needs to happen, we'll certainly have a training meeting. Okay, anything else on the day laws before we leave that topic? Any questions at all for the attorney? Yes, okay, and then I just want to apologize for the last meeting that I chaired for not reading all the resolutions into minutes. That was for dense on my heart, and I apologize for the information, I apologize to you for not good enough. I'll give you all the floor, if you all want to say anything for a second. But look over your monthly schedule for July. And also please remember to set your phone calendar or calendars to it for what Dr. Apek reminds us now. The commission has changed from a June 26th budget workshop and we moved to a June 30th budget workshop and meeting. So everybody can please be here on June 30th, and Dr. Apek will be decided on a 6:00 AM start, 6:00 AM start for the workshop. Okay, so Dr. Apek and Carolyn, you follow this now? Do you want to do the public hearing at 5:00, then workshop?
It's already been advertised at 6:00.
Oh, that's what starts at 6:00, public hearing? Okay, then workshop, then, okay, I'm leaving now, then, okay, thank you. All right, now, for the all commissioners, what do you have?
Let's take a break while we're...
Let's give just a second before we, before I want to accept an attorney in that week. I'll have to call a little bit, and I will be back.
A couple people have questions about the waterway cleanup. The waterway cleanup has finished for Carter County. So that waterway cleanup yielded 360,000 cubic yards of debris cleaned up out of McHogga Lake and several of the main tributaries in Carter County. It also yielded 4.5 billion cubic yards of debris cleaned up out of all the waterways in northeast Tennessee, which is around $100 million. The waterway project is completed, there's no further, the trucks are still finishing up on the debris sites. They're still molting and chipping and cleaning up the debris sites. The one in Hampton is almost, it's literally lower than it was. So, and I actually went out on McHogga Lake on Friday and drove, we drove it from one end to the next, and I was very impressed how clean McHogga Lake is. The debris, even in the nooks and crannies all the way up to the mouth of Elk River, the debris has been cleaned. We were very concerned about safety issues, but I'm very impressed with what this company did. We traveled the lake from one end to the next and all the coves, and the debris is non-existent. They've gotten a majority of it. There still may be issues through the summer, but we do have a beautiful lake, it's clean. I'm very impressed, they've exceeded expectations on cleaning our rivers, streams, and the lake, so.
Thank you, anybody else? All right, now I will accept the motion of attorney.
Okay, so motion by Jerry Prophet, second by Jerry Kim. All favors say ayes.
Good lead.